You ready, Dan? All right, let's call to order. This is a regular meeting in the City Commission, July 11, 2022. I don't see any recognitions. If we could have a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the nation, on behalf, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no call for this.
Dennison absent. Whedon?
Here.
Downey?
Here.
Money?
Present.
Swam?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Can we have a motion to approve the agenda? How much do you think? Do we have a second?
This is my ass for it.
May I have a call for this?
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Carries?
All right, very good. Now we'll open up the floor for public comments. Agenda items only. Three minutes, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I'd like to take a motion for approve on the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I support.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Carries?
All right, we move on to schedule matters on the floor. SMAC is sad in public hearing.
So I can share on behalf of SMAC that as was passed in our last meeting, there was approval to create a special assessment district and move forward with the funding of SMAC through that mechanism with their extended schedule for fee increases over the next several years. However, now the procedural process of creating that district needs to be done by a resolution. Presented in your packets tonight is Resolution 2022.07/437, which also sets a public hearing for Monday, July 25 at 7:00 p.m. To hear and consider any objections to this proposed special assessment district or sad.
Let's make a motion.
This is my add, move to approve Resolution 2022.07/437, establishing a special assessment district for SMAC and setting a public hearing for July 25, 2022 at 7:00 p.m.
We have a second. I'll support. No call, please.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yeah.
Carries?
Next agenda item is ADW Schedule update. We've Daniel from ADW, Amelia and Gary from the Barton Group. They will be joining us by Zoom every week.
That's correct. They have not yet joined in the Zoom meeting, so I just texted them to see if they're jumping on right now. We give them just a minute, they'll be jumping on the meeting. Okay, hearing this message that he's given. So he says at his end it's showing he's on. I'm only seeing one part of this, so let me try something. Total of the fund, technical difficulties. Recording in progress. I still don't show you in the waiting room. I do see Dan. Hi there, Dan, are you able to hear us?
I can.
Excellent, looks like Gary just joined us. So I'm not sure, Dan, since it was your summary, if you wanted to just do a brief overview of it for us?
Yeah, sure. So first, thanks for having me. Good to get back in front of you guys to kind of stock pick up on this project again. Gary has shared with me Bergman's updated design schedule and kind of tasked me with seeing what that does to our schedule overall. So I took that and kind of plugged it into the schedule we had built for this project based on everything we've got to ask so far. Basically, what it came down to is kind of a three-month delay and get Bergman's design where we are now. And that really usually translates to a three-month delay at the end of the month. So originally, we were talking about getting design documents, construction documents from Bergman kind of at the end of the summer, so end of August. That would put us through bidding in September, contracting proceeding to September, and then kind of holding off and starting construction until March because it'll take a long lead times for the reengineering of the building. So those long lead times are still a factor. They're not quite as bad. I think when we last talked about, they were going to be about 32 weeks. They're down to about 26 weeks now. So if we, Bergman's design schedule now has construction documents in place in November, kind of middle of November actually. So that half was us bidding November through December, get a budget in front of you guys for our GMP late December, early January, which means we would mobilize in that March that's, I'm sorry, mobilizing in that May towards the end of May, based on when we would get the reengineering of the building, which would be about July, which puts the end of construction. So turning us over to you guys, you guys will move in February of 2024. And I know originally it would forecast that to be November 2023, right around Thanksgiving. So I know Mike has always envisioned getting that before, which the reality of the new design schedule from Bergman makes that pretty difficult. Kind of the focus of why we're talking to you guys is there is another option. It kind of involves getting Bergman up to work to issue an early bid package for the reengineering of the building. And what that would mean is that, call it September, that's original time, we would get specifications from Bergman that would allow us to put that in front of contractors to get bids to the reengineering of the building so we can start to clock that lead time. So what that would look like is we would bid reengineering of the building in September, get that contract forwarded while Bergman is still working on finalizing the remaining construction documents. And that we would still get those at that same November time. But because we started the reengineering of the building clock on the lead time in February, we would still be able to mobilize in that original March that we'd always talked about and get you guys moved in in November. So that sounds all good, but there are a lot of risks inherent in that decision. And that was kind of why I wanted me to speak to you guys today and kind of raise you guys on it and see kind of where you guys' heads would be after this. So a lot of risk on this. The big one is you're committing to a large chunk of the total construction cost before you know the surveying costs are. So for this project, the reengineering of the building, that package is roughly a quarter of the total cost. So if you're looking at the total construction budget, 4.4, I think is what we last talked about, back in March, so 4.4 million. So committing to the reengineering of the building is you're getting through a contract of 1.1 million dollars roughly before you bid the rest of the project. So a lot of things can go wrong with that in that if you're committed to the 1.1 million dollar contract, for example, you bid the rest of the construction deck or the rest of the building in November, December, and now you realize the budget are a lot higher than you expected, you have to start kind of trims of back service, the value management here, the building to give us back to our target budget. And I think what we talked about is the best way that we seem to do that is to cut square footage off the reengineering of the building. That's your biggest bank of buck savings. So the risk in that, again, is that if you have to go back to getting the building and/or committing to that contract, you're going to risk having to pay reengineering fees, the potential of restarting that lead time because now you're asking them to redesign their product. The other items are, you know, some architecture firms do ask for additional fees for an early bid package. I'm not entirely sure with Bergman's policy on this, some firms don't, some do. So that would be a separate conversation. This is something you guys wanted to explore. There are other materials that could have a longer lead time that we're not aware of at the moment. I'll give you an example, there's some projects out there that have some pretty significant logistical gear that are looking at 52 weeks lead time. So that's something we're not aware of. So after we commit to the reengineering of the building contract and then we bid the rest of the project in November and then find out about these lead times, then any benefit of bidding the reengineering of the building goes out the window because now we're going to be waiting on a different charter. I don't think your logistical service on this one is large enough that it's going to be a big deal of a 52-week lead time for some of these less go near reasons. There are items out there that pop up that seems like every week we're getting an email, oh, your lead time is getting extended, your lead time is getting extended. So it's one of those things that's very hard to keep our thumbs on despite our own efforts. So it's just one of those risks that, again, if you're bidding separately, portions of the project, you might not have a full understanding of until at the very end. So kind of similarly, there are items that we do know of a long lead time right now that maybe that's reengineering early bid package grows with other teams. Well, that risk carries additional delays because Bergman needs more time to develop that early bid package and then you're not bidding the rest of the building until December, January. And that might cause more pricing resistance. So all of that to say is that there are strategies to leave the schedule back to where you guys might want to then before November. But in order to do that, there's a lot of risk that you guys would want to, you guys would need to accept, be willing to risk in order to move forward. I can't say that it's a strategy that we would 100% recommend because of all the risks and knowing how budget cashes you guys have been throughout this process, making sure that tax dollars are spent wisely. I'm not sure that this strategy would go down well once. But if the schedule is your number one concern, then this is a strategy you guys would want. You would want to take. Otherwise, going back to what I started off with, the schedule would look like mobilizing May, moving you guys in in February 2024.
And Daniel, I have a quick question for you.
Yep.
Is there such a thing as a hybrid of what you're suggesting? At least at some point in time in construction life, you could order the building and there is a certain given time frame where you could actually cancel the building for a fee, you know, for the H and A costs of it.
Yeah.
But you want us to hear that?
Yeah, I had a couple of conversations with a contractor about that for this specific case, for example, knowing that this was going to be a conversation we have. I got a lot of pushback on it mainly because of just the current climate. There's a lot of projects out there that they are bidding to. So it's for them, it's their risk reward. Well, if you want to commit to a project that we know has the potential of canceling versus committing to a project we know will get our whole contract done. So there are ways that you could admit it, including our bid documents and our general conditions, asking for that definition of that cancellation that it might look like. But that could be a way to, I would say, scare away potential bidders. It might not be a necessity because we're putting out there that this cancellation or this redesign might happen at a later date. So you're quoting Gary, yes, that has been done before. It's becoming more and more uncommon. But it is, it is a possibility.
So my other question would be, could you start down the path of ordering it, have Bergman get the bid package ready ahead of time, get the price sheet back and then decide to wait for the rest of the package to actually do it again or release it with the rest of it if you decided not to do it? It's curious, if there's no cost difference to getting ahead of time and have the option, you can ask the council to make the decision at that point rather than now?
That's, that could be a strategy, yes. So make sure I understand what you're proposing to say. We go down the line of doing an early bid package. We do bid, we reengineer the building and then see how that affects the budget and then have them make the decision at that point?
Yeah. And what, because you're going back to your schedule for a second? In the early bid? It's still be up there, right?
Yeah, so what that, I guess, what that would look like is, again, I think the September 1st step, because that's what Bergman said they would be done with design developments and starting construction. Assuming it'd be relatively simple for them to produce facts for reengineering of the building. So if you're, if we were to get that early bid package September 1st, we would bid that contract through the month of September and provide recommendations towards the end of September or early October. Saying this is where the reengineering of the building contract would be, we want to award that now. And at that time, we would provide an updated estimate based on the D E documents we provided. So that would give you a good idea of what the final cost would be, knowing that we would still need to get from end of September to November when we can get this design document, or construction documents fully bid and then ultimately get to the end of the year when we would have our final GMP contract costs in front of us.
And do you feel comfortable with that? I guess, you know, our last question is, it seems like a decent strategy that doesn't expose the council. But I need to know your candid response to that.
My candid response is that the bid market is widely unpredictable. We're seeing a lot of costs, especially more and more things going up. There are some things that come down. So it makes it pretty hard to predict what's going to happen, knowing that you're going to have a budget at the end of September and then again, at the end of the year, so three months, that's minimal effect. And if you were waiting a difference of a year, for example, I think it's a valid strategy, knowing that, you know, if you bid, you do get the early bid package, it's a net no extra cost, Bergman's not going to charge extra for it. You bid that in September and we're comfortable awarding you at that time, let's go, give that price back and proceed, the budget's standing too high. Maybe that's the point where we start valuing it here again. So that's a positive. Yeah. Just knowing that if that's the case and, you know, budgets are standing higher at that point, you start to, you get that, then that's going to further the way the potential starts instead of starting in that March or May, maybe it's looking, or June or July, and then the final movement is moving further out.
At that point, you're moving to February, how?
Right.
So like this?
So you've already lost a chance to move in before winter. Waiting 2024 is up.
Right.
And Daniel, would it be accurate to say that if we decided to change up the plan for value engineering, that's going to cause a delay regardless of whether we move for reengineered rebids or not?
Yes, mainly because it goes back to the value engine process. A lot of time look like us going to have a conversation with the architects, subcontractor partners, getting ideas together and then kind of vetting those ideas, which they kind of already started the process back in March when we first presented budgets to the council. So we've got a lot of good ideas out there. It's just a matter of what is the council willing to swallow and what is Mike willing to forfeit. I think like we talked about, the best thing for Buck up as well is a simple building is kind of script. I know it was hard for Mike to realize that option. So yes, you know, value engine process adds 20 weeks to this process. I mean, I think that there's some things that might need to be forfeited if the budget's tracked up.
So at this point, we're just seeking your guys' thoughts for which strategy you want us to proceed with. I didn't want to make this decision without input from the commissions. I thought it was an important one.
My biggest concern is we throw up something else that Bergman is just going to take them longer to get this done. We're already seeing enough delays out of them. So I think we stick with the original schedule for sale.
I almost have to agree with Patrick on that. I, it's, you know, sticking with the original schedule is going to be the best for us.
I'm curious, for Daniel, was the discussion to remove square footage done internally or was that some communication they had received? Because it definitely had been a discussion topic amongst the commission. I'm just curious if they had done that from a financial perspective to say, you know, we know instantly we could save money upfront, even though it would delay the potential for the movement. So I don't know if he can hear us or not.
Yeah, you're pretty muffled and a distant other.
Sure, so Mayor Proton Whedon was inquiring, actually, we talked directly to hear, our Mayor Proton Mark Whedon was inquiring as to whether you were basing the talk about reducing square footage to save money based on internal conversations or if that came from conversations that the commission had.
That was based on, so you remember back end of March, a few months ago, we kind of presented a list of alternatives to you guys as a way to try and figure out what the baseline budget should be. And two of the biggest savings options at that time were you were going to cut four bays off of the vehicle storage area, which ultimately cuts that storage in half. That was a savings of over $400,000. And then the next biggest one was cutting two bays, so a quarter of the vehicle storage area, which is, was a savings of over $230,000. So those were options that we presented to you guys back at the time. At that point, weren't something you guys were willing to forfeit? I'm just, I guess I'm saying that now that, you know, we get towards the point where we're ready to set GMP and costs are a little bit too much at that point, then those are, those are going to be the biggest savings if we're too far in the budget.
Are we trending that way, Daniel? Is that a concern?
Not sure if you heard, Daniel, but Commissioner Patrick Swam was asking whether you felt that we may be trending to be over budget, if you're concerned that that's likely.
Well, we, last budget we looked at was in March. Again, it's been three going on for four months. So I know I had talks with the reengineering of metal building side company, for example, he's had some cost decreases in the structure itself, but the siding has gone up a little bit. So I think there's going to be some give and take with different work scopes. It's hard to say at this point, but I know once we get Bergman started, I think there'll be a couple of points in time which we do, you know, update our estimate for that to you guys. So it's not as if we're not, we're never going to share an updated cost to you guys until we get a GMP contract. It'll be a continuous conversation for sure.
So are we?
So we were just hoping for a motion to decide which strategy you guys wanted to proceed.
I'm going to stick with the Bergman design schedule and not issue an early PMB bid.
Do you have support?
I'll support, excuse me, this money, I'll support that.
Swam?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Carries? So were you guys both able to hear the vote? Dan?
Uh, I think so, they voted to stick with the original Burman design schedule.
That's correct. No early bid package, correct. All right, I thank you guys both for your time tonight.
And you, and you, yes, every night?
You too. Recall.
All right, um, moving on, we have reports from the departments, a trade report, report for endeavor of arrest.
You go up there. Do you want my mic, or you go on up there? Okay, I left a revenue expenditure report for you all to review, this is a very, very preliminary as to where you're, where you're at. Now you'll see, there's a lot of adjustments that are gonna be needed, and there's a lot of reallocation of expenses. There's a lot of them that I think were just clerical errors, they were discarded to their own departments. For instance, the employee, coal pay insurance, and all of the funds is way off. If you look down on the first page, all the way down one oh one six eight three zero zero four, you'll see that we budgeted eighty thousand eight fifty-five, but we've only charged sixty-six thirty-nine so far. So those expenses are some, are somewhere else, so we have to just reallocate, and I, Heather and I were going through preliminary just to see what, what funds were off and what accounts we thought needed to be adjusted, and we both agree there's quite a few, and this is just really preliminary. So you can go through each fund, and on the, the last page for each fund, like, for instance, general ledger, or, sorry, general fund, page eight out of nineteen. You'll see the amended budget for the revenues, and then for expenditures, what was budgeted, right next to it is what has been charged respectively. It's about a big difference, so, I have some work ahead of me. And I provided each fund here, so if you wanted to go through them individually, we can, or you can just take this with a grain of salt and know that I'm gonna be working to get it revised.
How's it coming with the S and A, I know this was a specific issue with the conversion, right?
Yep.
This issue right here? Are we making progress there?
Yes.
Good.
It's just we, now we're gonna go through and flag them and
Yeah.
drill down and find out where they were charged originally and fix them to where they should be.
It took the S and A a while to acknowledge that some of the problem was at their end, but they've now acknowledged that and are making the fixes. It just took them, in my opinion, longer to acknowledge that than it should have, but we're in that phase now where they're fixing it so that they're not being allocated incorrectly automatically when they're under the system. Um, and the other thing to note is, luckily, when we're looking at the differences here, we're under budget, so we're getting rather than over, so obviously that's a better case scenario than the opposite.
Um, you may be getting to this, how is the bank reconciliation coming with the S and A, have you been improving there?
We're, and, well, we just started June, fingers crossed, May was a zero, so we're hoping it continues. Let you know. And bottom dimension, we have our audit and bill work scheduled for August thirty-one, September one is September two, so the auditors will be here. They've mentioned that they wanna have a meeting with the board, um, to, you know, answer any questions you have, and explain the process, explain what's going on, what has happened, and what's gonna happen going forward. And then with the new board, they're also gonna do the same thing, because we're having some turnover. So if you have any questions, you can address them to Heather, and then we'll figure them out and get answers for you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your confidence in me.
And I'll go real quickly, too, what an amazing job she's been doing since step started, we've had our first month of time with bank reconciliation that bounced correctly, so I'm really excited for that, her professionalism is really helping us.
Wonderful, decision well made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda is Thrill on the Hill. Ms. Ashley.
It's me, and Chief Burnett is here to answer technical questions, I think, if I know the answer. I think you guys got the road closure packet as well, so if you have any questions on that, again, Chief Burnett will know better than me, but I just wanted to run these by you and make sure that you were okay with them, they're the same as they are every year. Um, we didn't make any additional, uh, changes or anything to the road closures, but it's just the ones that would need to be closed and traffic redirected for Thrill on the Hill.
Just, uh, I, hold on, um. So we have Chippewa Palooza going on at the same time, is that?
That's, that's right, yeah.
Okay, is, is, uh, Days Avenue wasn't closed off, right?
Uh, I don't remember, I have to look through, I don't think Days is closed.
That just came to mind, and I didn't, I didn't, I've got a map right here.
I, yeah, I don't believe it is, based on what I'm seeing, um, but Chippewa Palooza is only gonna be taking place Saturday this year, uh, because Friday would be drowned out for the, uh, yeah, because of Thrill. So I don't know if that impacts your question at all, but it will be a one-day festival.
I don't think we've ever had Days shut off before, have we? I, I can't remember ever.
No.
Being shut down.
Last year was only Chippewa Palooza year, so.
Yeah, so they didn't overlap, now, what concerns me is the amount of people that may be going back and forth between the two events and the crossing without the road closed. If you feel that we need the road closed, we can, just need to put that in.
I think the, when we talked about the last time, a big concern was if we had enough officers that could come that day to.
That, that wasn't the concern.
I was just saying, I thought, I thought. That was if it was front streets, I don't think it was just days of conversation, so.
It does take away additional parking as well, but Chief Burnett, I'll leave it to you to make a recommendation or come back with something else.
I think that was the point, uh, ten gainers, was that, where did we wanna have our focus on safety? Was it going to be more on Redbud and near the Thrill on the Hill? Assuming that we were gonna have naturally more adults at the Chippewa Palooza, I think that was kind of underlying the tone of that, and I thought the families may be crossing, but that, that would probably be a more dangerous area than Days Avenue by that point, cars are somewhat slowed down, I think the number of cars in town seems to slow people down, and I know Chief, you'll have, you'll have your control lot, I know if you're.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be tight up over the thrill, but, you know, I think Days will be fine, um, I think everybody's gonna be mostly at the thrill. So I think we should be okay.
I know, I have a huge presence out there, so. Anything else on the thrill?
Well, I, I have one more thing on the thrill, um, it's the noise ordinance, so we have the Friday night is our concert, and the adult um, only ride, which is the same again as it has been in the past, which goes until one A M. Um, it shouldn't be super loud until one A M, um, the concert should be over by ten, eleven, um, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that the noise ordinance could potentially be violated, and I'm hoping no one arrests.
Well, that's a backup, I just need to get a motion to approve the road closures, if we could, for the thrill and the hill.
Well, this is money, I've moved to approve the Thrill on the Hill road closure as presented.
I'll support.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Carries?
Okay, and then?
Sorry, I thought you were putting them together.
No, you're okay, I was, I was supposed to be leading the meeting, so, um, are you, are you good on, uh, noise ordinance?
Yes, um, we are hoping to have another concert Thursday night, but it shouldn't violate the noise ordinance if it does happen, and I will update you if that takes place, but I just wanted to give you a heads up, but the only one I'm bringing up right now is for Friday night.
And that would be, that, that's the one until that, uh, moose?
There's gonna be, it's gonna be a different range over this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we adjusted.
Okay, so they're gonna have the, the fenced in area, the tenant area, I mean, the moose park, I don't know who it was parking lot that is, I'm not sure who it does belong to right now.
I think they're just using that parking.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, the, the city's leasing that space from the moose board along the hill, so we can utilize it for parking.
And I do have a site layout in my office, if you'd like to see how we're arranging it this year, it is different than years past, and we're hoping it'll cut down on congestion, make it a little safer and easier to manage, uh, and we have come up with some accommodations for being able to see the hill, even though we've flipped the layout a little bit.
I think it'd be better for you, Chief, and the team down there to be mostly focused on one side instead of having that, that.
And that's a good sound point, and where, where they're gonna have a concert at is actually a pretty good place, we're gonna not have to worry about people crossing back, or allegedly crossing back and cross the slide, which we don't want happening, but they're gonna be detained right there, so.
So they would all be coming in from this backside then?
Right.
And our tickets and everything is on that side, so it'll, it'll hopefully cut down on some of those slips and traffic errors there.
Very good. Are you making a motion for no votes?
I'm gonna approve the request noise ordinance waiver for Thrill on the Hill as presented. Do you have a second?
This is money, I'll support it.
Have a roll, please.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Carries?
Thank you all. If you have other questions about Thrill, just let me know.
Okay, guys, make sense. All right, moving on to unfinished business, park ordinance, second reading, consider moving to second reading for adoption of the ordinance two zero two two dash zero six dash four three three.
So as a quick review, this ordinance to regulate our city parks was, um, read into our last meeting, was approved for first reading. Our legislative process requires it be approved a second time before it's fully adopted, so if there is a majority yes vote this evening on this ordinance, it will be adopted and will be enacted after it is published locally in newspaper of record.
Very good. Someone wants to make a motion to approve the second reading?
I'll go to approve the second reading of ordinance number two zero two two point zero six dash four three three to adopt new regulations for city parks.
Do you have support? I'll support.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Carries?
All right, very good, um, now moving on to new business, closed session to discuss real property. Someone wants to make a motion to go on the closed session.
This is money, I have moved to go into a closed session. Pursuant. Pursuant to M C L fifteen point two six eight, section eight, one D, to consider the potential purchase of or lease of real property.
Do you have support? I'll support. Have a roll, please.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
You're enclosed.
Thank you.
I forgot my.
I question it today.
I know, I've got my head, I can. We have to, I don't know what that is, we figure out how to park everybody.
No, but, um, I don't completely understand, I'm pretty sure it's some background.
Oh, we don't know, it's totally out here. Somebody buying a property on the north side, that's why it's been up to four every year, done nothing to it, now all of a sudden they buy a house and they tear it down.
I can all, all call. Okay, with that, uh, but I don't think.
Yes. Oh. I think they were trying to check up, it was a national.
But anyways, okay, so all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. She's had special powder on.
I want to spray it and kill it. I wanna make it where it's a pavement. Definitely doesn't talk to ground, this is what they're used to.
So all that came back and you push the buttons, you guys.
Yeah, because I didn't try it. Oh, yeah. No, Sydney's, Sydney's twenty-one, bro.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we've got, between Jack and I, we've got fourteen of them, the old one's twenty-four, huh?
All right, I'm gonna go, uh, get my report.
He bought it, they don't go down there, they remember nothing, you know, they, they were around. He manages to find buyers for them, they suckered me into buying one, one year, oh, I told him I'd buy, it was one that didn't make the interest. So I said, I'll buy, I'll buy that one, on the average price, like everyone said, so fricking, uh, their neighbors at the time.
Could pay like five dollars to get six off of that?
Well, I bought one, I got apple pie. And it was bad, it was apple pie.
I mean, you can pay a hundred dollars for a rabbit down there. You can pay a lot more than that for a rabbit.
Oh, I know!
Believe me!
I'm almost cut Thursday out of my schedule this year.
They asked me if I'd buy another big bone, I'm not even gonna review that. No way, no way, no way, no way. I said, I can buy, I can buy four hogs for what you sold me today, I said, you can buy them special hogs to take those here. Get gray on the whole time, and I says, then, I says, I'm just gonna have the same conversation with you, my grandpa had with me, grandpa slopped his hogs, I put my hogs wherever was available, crack corn was cheaper three days, so, and, but, I think you'll continue to buy them until
It's a bunch of old.
till Jayden gets out, can't fair no more, I think you'll continue to buy, I'll take for Jayden, because that one year he had five or six, because he had a couple for, a couple of friends, and I mean, he had one for Sydney's birthday, that one year. You know, he's got his pig den all set up, and place him, or Danielle and Toby get it, and they finally, Toby managed to get away from all of it. He said, no, you know, no chickens, no rabbits, no pigs, nothing, you know, so, but I mean, he's working. He's in charge of all northwest Indiana now for holiday properties for late ones. Doesn't come with a real big payday, you know, I mean, really, and he was complaining, I said, well, I said, you got an awful lot for you, and I said, I see you have a lot of all paintings, I said, you know, I said, I don't personally get it, because it's seventy hours a week, going all the time, I said, but whatever you can get away with, I do that, that's the brewery, but for you, the pain model there.
Yeah.
Pain goes to a lot of games too, but he goes over there, um, he works Saturdays. He's pretty much exclusively got, um, that place to watch, I had that back, he started running down, he started that contract, he was interested in you.
Well, he gets a hard worker, I think, yeah.
And when he, he got that, when he was working for Welch, he got parking, he took everything when he left Welch. And the next guy that he worked with, tried to say to him, he ain't keeping that scene. He says, I know that, because I've not been working for him. Right now, he's ordering a big board, he must have been a hell.
Yeah, that's right.
He knows all the machines, the oil life structure, yeah, I'm trying to think what the name of that place is, I used to pick up in that, you know, where it's at, it's on sixty-two, just outside of the water.
Lions Industries.
Yep, Lions, yep. You know, I mean, I mean, they expanded that exponentially. Oh, yeah, um, he got into trouble, the legal's. But he figured out the facts. Once he would throw that, that one year, and I didn't, I'm making another bumper, that fire blast, that good for him. You know? Yes. Right. Trying to get it all off, yeah, see now, the only thing that I forced around that I do, I was, I was in. See now, the only thing that I forced around that I do, I was in, I was in France back then. When they were doing bread statues. Writing that stuff all day, you know, it was really fine writing, so, oh, I brought out the hives. Oh, no, that's why I got this thing. You know, you don't know what you're buying. Right. I think they're really true. Brutal type.
Is that because of taxes?
Yeah. But they're not getting ready to.
Is that right?
No, and we bought that property, Victor Park. I mean, I went up there and I talked to all the commissioners about trying to do something. And they were sort of putting that down. And they freaked out because they didn't want to talk to him. And I mean, this whole debacle about the EPW creation, think all this stuff that I wrote, the game, the side on the side. What size are they gonna go with, Mike? Twenty one thousand?
I.
They don't, you don't even know?
Well, if they cut it in half, like they originally talked about, it'll be less space than I had before.
Well, the number I heard was at least at fourteen thousand.
Yeah, that's because of.
And.
Well, that'd be just cutting the one end off.
I don't think they're gonna go less than eighteen, do I understand? But I mean.
You should be central on this.
Yeah.
There should be none of this crap.
No, I couldn't care less where it goes.
Well, I, but I mean.
Do they build it or?
This should be a mystery, mystery. This is your baby.
I, I would love to be involved in it. They don't want me involved in it, so I say I. Everything I say, they go against.
But they won't fight with you. I mean, they won't, they won't argue with you face to face, toe to toe like I do.
Well, I can't.
What about Third Street?
Uh, so Celso's got a, uh, the emergency in South Bend, there's a big water main break that broke laterally.
So they were gonna start on?
They were gonna start on.
So they're gonna have to. Is that the one down there on Otten Road?
Um, on Main Street, I think.
Oh, it's right downtown?
Yeah, yeah, it's like split a hundred feet long.
Oh, wow.
So, long, not.
Yeah.
Long pipe, long.
Yeah.
So they're, hopefully next week, they're hoping to have that one wrapped up this week or next week can be back over here.
I did want to ask you too, when was the last time you cleaned out Storm Dreams going down the river? Have they been cleaned out at all?
Yes.
They has?
Oh, yeah. All that dirt that runs down the hill, I clean them out five, six times a year. I'm only required to clean them out one.
Well, I understand that.
But we clean them out five or six times a year.
So, the only thing that's gonna stop that is coal.
I would personally like to see them build like a little half wall and keep all that stuff behind.
Well, okay, that's an idea. She was throwing around a new road. They don't get how much. I don't see it. I mean, I'm not an engineer.
Well, there's grant money that they're applying for and got, they have to allocate and put places and I think that's what they're, they're gonna rebuild that road is, is, is what the grant was got for.
Right, but she, when she asked me about, I says. For the angle, I don't think you could run that road down off Redbug. That's the reason why they ran it the way they did.
Yeah.
Cause they have to run down around the hill.
How they want, yes.
Right, but I mean, you could put a lot of money into that.
Yeah.
And there's, Fourth of July, there was fifteen cars down.
Yeah.
And I mean, we've got two homeless that are regular down there now.
Absolutely, every day, so.
Yeah.
Every day. And we, you know, I sent a truck down there two times a week to grade that lot and that road and they.
Well, after that last rainstorm hit, it washed out really bad. That's the worst it's been.
Yeah.
And the guy that they chased off the last time, he got mad whoever was supplying his pot. And I was down there with the dog and grandson. He started walking towards me, cussing, screaming at me.
Did he have his machete?
Oh, he didn't have his machete, but.
No, his name is Jesse.
I just turned a deep growl voice in and turned up four letter words and said, you better just turn your happy ass backwards and walk awry.
Yeah.
And he did, you know, just like yelling at a dog.
Yeah.
I mean, I, he's unstable for sure.
Yeah, well, he pulled a, he pulled a machete, like a twenties machete on my guys over at Rabbit's Park because he thought they were coming to get his cans. And my guy was literally spraying the feds around and he come out of the pavilion with a twenty.
Well, I complained, I complained twice. I talked to Tim, I says, I don't care if you got your rules in place or not, you better do something. Somebody's gonna do something.
Yep.
I says, cause if he comes at my grandson, I said, I don't have my gun no more. Guys, I got a ball bean hammer, I got a baseball bat. His machete ain't gonna stand a chance against me breathing or not.
What if he comes at a kid? What if the kid goes up there? Cause he was thinking about his cans. Don't you get close to my cans? What if the kid walks up there?
Well, Zane's only seven, you know, and I kept a really close eye on him.
Yeah.
I'd probably get pretty mad if he come after my dog.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Cause I have video of the lease law really well.
It wasn't.
The big pump there?
Yes.
As soon as I can get down.
So is that, is that like it's washing away? Has that happened before?
They've had it all the time. It was not washing away, whatever it is.
Cause I go down there with the dog.
Yeah. I promise you, I'm just worried.
Information.
Yes, cause I mean. My hands.
Really?
I could look at it, but I can't transmit it. But from the. Root of the cabbages and all that kind of shit.
Yeah.
But I mean, we're doing plenty of it.
I don't think it's easy. First time I had it was last year.
Twenty six, it goes.
Yep.
And I would have thought that. Whatever they just signed up.
So somehow they did.
So I talked to Pat. I said, I'm losing the no rising, I have to buy laws. You know, they're commissioning. So what do you do? And can't just afford ourselves. So that shouldn't happen, so I don't know.
I want to shout this tomorrow, probably just to announce with my guys and say.
I can't beat those teams.
Yeah. No matter how I say it.
Well, that was really nice.
You, nice. It just doesn't happen very often.
Yeah.
Now do what you're doing.
Which is weird. I don't, I would check it out.
I don't. Party season's diet is, you know, you're dying. I'm sorry, there you go. Take two aspirins and go to sleep and if you wake up, you're lucky.
I'm ever in, and I'm in this room, you just keep walking.
Man, I appreciate my wife more than anybody in the family. Oh, yeah. I'll be applying tomorrow.
Okay. I will let you know long before the sale happens.
Never come to you. And it's not your fault.
I'm trying.
I know, we're trying. I cannot. Say badly, anything. Except you did put that in.
Yeah.
But I don't think.
Are you just gonna get in and work out?
I, I'm.
Or what?
I called a young man this morning to see if he could come to work part time for the water department. I haven't heard anything back, so. I don't. Applications running.
Have you got anything? It has to be downtown.
Well, we're gonna start a pop molly program, so I just want to run a truck or. There you go.
JT told me I could, I could, um, drive the, uh, street sweeper.
There you go. I'd like to get a new street sweeper. It's always broke down, but.
Yes, that's the only thing.
I haven't called my friend Deb yet to see where I gotta go and says.
I stand behind Jake, anything that it could, is built by a.
No. Nope. Well, that one came to us years to begin with.
On time.
We had a brand new one, we got it on grant and then they traded it in for this one because the new one we got wasn't what should have been for this area. So we traded it in for this one. This one's a bit of a problem since we got it. I probably got a crash, you know, that baby that we grabbed, we built like a couple of times with all the parts and stuff like that.
How far does the E room?
If we run it hard, I could probably run it two times during the whole town and then I have to replace the main room over the side room home at last.
Do you need your.
Uh, no, no, I can get a two sweep in time if it's rolling up and I've swept six times.
Oh, they. Yeah. Oh, we can have third.
So what's happening?
Cause I've run out here. Storm dreams.
Yeah, well, we're trying to keep them clean, so that's for sure.
Oh, I.
All the time, people moving grass right off the road. I think stopping and putting my badge on and telling them we can't do that. Against me, Trump.
Well, yes, you're not up there all the time, so. I can't call you when my neighbor.
Yeah. Yeah, we, um. Well, the number to the EPW, seven five four seven, is a cell phone. She rings, I carry it every day all day.
Oh, I didn't know that. That's the number I copied. Right, yeah, seven o'clock because that's what JT was there.
Yep.
Okay. I can remember.
Now, I might not answer it cause I'm busy or I didn't hear ring, but that's. That brings my personal cell.
Yeah, at water, I thought Scott does some work, he's in charge of.
No, it doesn't. Well, I'm Scott's boss.
Oh, I didn't know that either.
I'm over water, wastewater cemetery and.
Then cemetery and street, how many employees do you have here? I thought five.
I have three at the cemetery and I have six at the street department, including myself.
Oh, I didn't know we had that many.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you should get everything done, but I.
Well, still, we're still supporting every other. Academy in the city, so. We do everything, so.
When the flood comes down, I would like that.
Okay. Yeah, that doesn't, that timing didn't work out until you put it up the day that you wanted to look at it, so, yes, I will get it to you.
That's when I went over and walked up, walked around.
Yeah. Yep.
And then I, I was made.
What door? My door? I don't know. I can't lock it because I have, there's. People that don't have keys that can get in there, my car typer is probably a week or two, that don't have keys that can get into the building and that's where we have some of our things in the back room back there, so. I have to leave it unlocked for the day.
That tells me more than you do. I can look to see if it has room or, um, I didn't take it.
Yeah, yeah, well, there is that front room behind the door. Yeah, we hide them. Usually people like.
I did one when they were on Front Street. They bashed it. Would it be useful if you stayed there?
What's that?
Give you a use for you to stay.
To stay where?
Up on hill?
If, if we build the building and it has an office down there, I'll go with the. Because my guys are reporting to one location, that's what our deal is, so. Everybody reports and if our equipment's all in the same spot, then it's easier to just direct from there, so. Well, we have, we show up up there so they can get to our days and sports at our. Reporters and we sweep or. Chat a sewer or we run a water line or something like that. We have to report that stuff every day, so. And I answer by emails. We figure out what we're doing today and if that's.
Our streets are that bad, aren't they?
They're that bad, yeah. Our water isn't that bad a shape, yes. I've only seen one lateral break up in my twenty years here. And that was on Old Street at Swisher.
Oh, wonderful.
Yep. And it was on a twelve inch water main. That was the first time I ever saw a twelve inch water main. And there was fifteen meters of broken. Yes, it broke back, right up the water main. The first one I ever saw.
Last one.
That's the last one I ever saw.
Yeah. First and last. It crossed Oak Street.
Yep. Well, this is the second one.
I lost it.
It was all the way up there, so.
And I mean, every time you go in there, I mean, there's just that much more that you're gonna have to like, you know, like a hat. Cause I mean, as long as you got form, there's always something you can put on there.
Yeah.
And we thought, you know, Jason would want an opportunity to get together and go over the cones.
Well, you know, I can only, can only guess that Rich is working on that behind the scenes. That's his job, so we'll see. Glue those.
Yeah.
Well, let me tell you, I did some work down here in that electrical panel.
Every month.
That whole top.
Went over what's.
Right there is not attached to it.
I don't know that there's anything to do with you yet.
I mean, I don't know. I'm, I'm serious, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's a roll in. Well, he's busy doing lots of other things.
It looks like it'd be fun to come in here with a magic mic and just have a good.
At least that's on the interior wall, not an exterior wall. That was, that was my old, old building down there. It was like that to the outside.
Oh. I got a lot down there. I got a lot of complaints from people that watch the trail. Come tell me. There was a place over there. I knew exactly where you were at, at least, although they can't do me that.
You know, when I started there, we should have done a lot of maintenance on that building and we should have done that, so.
What Joe LaFunt did.
I, I, he was before me, so.
He was here when I.
Yeah. Yeah, that building could have been saved a long time ago, but now it's, you know, obviously it's gone now, but.
And Gordhut's was here.
Yeah, when I started. Mike was not, Phil was.
Mike was male man.
No, John was the male man. Mike worked at the city too, but then he left and he went out to the apartments and was the.
Same time I asked somebody to come in and infracture.
For a long time.
You know, rate, you know, put the infrastructure in and just give him a hundred year lease on his property. Cut off the back side of it. We get the reconstruction.
Fletcher was not nice to you guys. Because the places.
First thing they all mean.
They tell me he was sent out to North Center only when he used to once.
Yep. Yep.
We didn't talk about that out there or present.
Uh, nickel. I'm just in. Something, I think, I was on down now building one.
Were you in the commission?
Uh, messing around with me trying to create a position when I.
That was my very, that was my very first meeting.
Of course, I can't remember it other than there was some boards that I was supposed to break out.
You know, I mean, when it first come out, we didn't see any breaks. Going on the housing around the guy. And in fact, they allowed to build their homes. Cause and I told them all, I told them all, I gave them plans and stuff like that. But there was no, there was no.
That building was sad.
You know, I mean, we gave you.
It's still a nice place down there. It's a really nice place on top of it, but all the hills built nice.
Three P A.
Oh, it looks nice.
To recertify property, even those.
It looks nice.
And that's.
My daughter, it's probably down to her.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, those buildings are already bad shape.
I don't wanna go in on my good.
Yeah. Yeah, there's come back and still. It's still there.
It's my back. It just gets out of anger.
Well, I mean, as you know, this happens all the time. There's usually some reaction about how much time we have to build.
Yeah, when I was commissioner, I called and talked to.
Any generated appointment or some kind of.
It's very hard. When I talk to you, getting very kind of. Said it's very hard. That's really what happened. He said, well, these options.
How you can take something out of it?
So you're, the landfill, now they have their own tree handling, so they just discharge to us. Or they're, so it goes through our plant. It's to be charged with our stuff and what? So it's clean, pretty much clean when it comes to that to us. But before they were sending their, whatever it was, foresting all the way through to the wastewater treatment plant, but. Believe me, I've been on their jet and all those sewers, it's a process. It's a long way.
I just didn't get, why do you wanna travel to here over here?
Well, now that they have their treatment plant out there, it is a lot better coming to us. But it is, Amichi is coming to us a lot better.
That's good. Thank you, I understand. That makes sense.
Well, they have to use our discharge. So we have to put our hands on it because we hold those licenses. To be able to discharge the water. So basically they clean it. Now we clean it again, go do ours and then send it out.
Are the other places, the town, we're from township, Niles Township. Niles, they're all participating in that.
Uh.
Or is it just we're done?
It's, it's basically where the sewer goes out to the landfill. Those people have the chance to hook up and they run it through this. It comes, we charge them for the township and stuff and then it comes to us and then. So we do all, all the sewers, the houses and stuff like that, all that's from us. That sewer draws, so that.
All right, and I can see why you need so much.
Yeah. And we make good money off of it.
I'll be going.
I'd like to, uh, take a motion to return to open session.
Uh, this is money. I'd move to reenter open session.
Do I support it?
I'll support.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Carries, you're in open.
I'll move to offer the city manager to take action to, to discussions held in closed session.
Money? Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Carries?
Okay, well, money to the petition city. You came in summer of two thousand twenty-two newsletter.
Yes, pursuant to the special assessment or SAD district or SMAC as we're required to send out to each resident in the district mailing, so we decided since we're already paying a mail, we would include a informational newsletter, so each resident should be receiving that. It'll go out in the mail later this week. And that's gonna have lists of events coming up. Um, it's also gonna have information that's pertinent to anyone who's gonna be voting in the August primaries. It discusses the fact that the detour for Thrill on the Hill will potentially impede anyone who's trying to get to City Hall. It's only a brief two minute detour, so we made sure that there's a very clear map showing how to get around that for anyone who's voting. Be aware that that will add, you know, potentially two minutes to your drive time.
Public accuracy testing.
Yep, so we are scheduling for July twentieth for, at eleven A M. For, uh, public accuracy testing for the primary, so if you want to come watch me test, I'll be here.
Briefly explain what that is.
So I am testing the tabulator. So what I'm doing is I create a test deck. And what I do is I run them through the tabulators and my numbers will match what my test deck shows. So it's showing you accuracy. It's showing you that everything is sealed. Those sealed numbers have to be approved by the election workers on election day in the poll book. Everything is double checked, triple checked, and it's so the public can see actually that, hey, it was tested, all the numbers are correct, the seals are there, so everybody knows. Nobody ever shows up, but I think it's a really cool thing, so if you wanna come watch.
You're the climate two years ago. I appreciate your dedication to that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I want to have, uh, public comments for non-agenda audience. You have three minutes, please. Go to your buddy, just tell your name and. She's ready to go.
John Dow.
Norma Ferris, three zero four North Oak. I would like for you to consider making Oak Street a fire lane. You're gonna tear up Buchanan. That's Front Street. They will be able to get out South Oak and North Oak. It was discussed one time a while back. It was never, um, taken action on. Our street is narrowed, but we don't have parking on it like you have downtown.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Norma.
That's all.
Appreciate it.
Hi, everyone. Rick Panigua, one twenty East Front Street. And I'm just commenting and following up on Buchanan Fest. I want to say thank you to so many of you, Heather, and whoops.
She's gone.
Anyway, you commissioners, thank you. Really appreciate, uh, all the work in making it happen in such a short timeline. Chief Burnett showing up on Sunday when we couldn't get into our building and Ralph McDonald helping us with heavy equipment to move the, uh, barricades and the chamber for allowing us to use the barricades. Meg Paulette, her, uh, her performance at the, uh, at the concert was, was outstanding and it was fun to see. And so I was very, very impressed and happy at what we accomplished in such a short period of time. It was really quite amazing. And, um, we had record amounts of people come through our store Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Raised a little over thirteen and a half thousand dollars. And, um, I think that there's gonna be more to come. We've got pledges. These are cash donations that we've already accepted. And we've got pledges for a good amount more. It's gonna be a continual process throughout the year. And, um, we've got people participating in, in a significant way. And we hope that, uh, we're gonna be able to do more of these events. And, uh, the goal maybe will be to perhaps get, uh, more people to actually attend the concerts because the music was fantastic. Some of the things I heard from the locals that, uh, did, um, show and put their, their chairs out and spend the day was that, um, the Red Bud Weekend is usually a weekend where they don't like to leave their home and they are happy that there was something going on in town. And, uh, they really appreciated the music and had a lot of nice things to say. I think logistically, uh, we, we did a pretty good job. We got things set up, broken down, left the facility in, uh, in a pristine, you know, you know, condition. The hard work of the folks at River Saint Joe really, uh, you know, went a long way and the folks on my, my team, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, I don't see any other public comments. Move on to city manager.
So I wanna first thank Rick for his comments and I wanna express my gratitude for Rick and Tony as well as Monroe for the dedication they showed to bring an event to our Buchanan residents. I think that was wonderful. Also excellent that they were able to raise funds for a local charity, so that's really well done. I appreciate it and I know many residents appreciate it as well. Um, I wanna thank the rest of our community for being engaged in our local election. And especially thank our dedicated clerk, Cal Lenson. She's more humble than she should be. She is, I would say probably one of the best and maybe best clerk in all of Marion County. She is extremely professional. She knows her stuff. And she is as dedicated as you could possibly be to ensuring a fair and transparent process, and I applaud her for that. And I think all of our residents are extremely appreciative of that, so thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Swam?
Thanks, Rick, for having the event. I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys do with those funds and continuing the updates on the impact I'll make. That's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Money?
I'd just say thanks to Rick. Uh, it was a good event. Uh, everything went smooth apparently and, uh, people alive served, had a good time, so, uh, once again, thank you for that. Once again, I always like to thank this commission for what they do. Uh, we've got some hard tasks and we seem to be taking it in stride. Uh, we all work well together and I just want to thank you for that, so I, uh.
Well, Rick, thank you. It's always nice to have any new event in Buchanan.
Thank you. Uh, I wanna mirror everybody that made the comment. Thanks to Rick. Thanks to not only yourself. I know that you had a whole team of people, uh, advertisements and, and collection of funds to get the bands to show and just it was, it was, it was pretty awesome to see. I know it's, uh, oh gosh, Jen Tabor had done really, really well. It's the communication that Tony had, had said to me and he, uh, said it was impressive the number of people that were coming through the store and were interested, not just in, uh, what the store had, but everything that was going on in the back.
Jen's got some great ideas and I think we're gonna work together on the next one.
Good.
She's got some really great ideas for this space.
Thanks to, to Ralph and everybody that's at the corner there working hard to, I know we see the posts on Instagram and, uh, you know, like let there be light. It's, 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 you can't say enough great things on what's happening in downtown with the education. I think each of your team that is, uh, you know, I mean, every day they're out there picking up something, organizing something, and I, I really do appreciate that as well, so, um. Cal, I can't say enough great things as well. I know we don't spend a lot of time talking, but what I hear from everybody else and what our statements were tonight ring true. Deborah Lompa, I know you've got a big task, but you seem to be, you seem like you're pretty sharp, so I don't have any doubt that you're digging in and you're gonna give us everything that we need, especially this guy. Cause he's not gonna be easy to deal with on the other side. We got Larry for one thing and we've got Patrick for the other. About that, that's all I've got. Thank you, everybody who showed up this evening and for, uh, being here. Thank you. Uh, I'd like to take a mo, or somebody like to make a motion to.
This is money I told.
He also works. Swam?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
You're in here.
You make money for us.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to change it. I can still at least, I know. I can't just copy your face.